All right, Laura, would you mind calling the role for the Boulder Valley School District's Board members?
Garcia. Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Sergeant.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziz.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules. We have not met with the Superior Town Trustees in a really long time. And a couple of years ago, we made a pretty concerted effort to meet with all of the different city councils that we serve. So we've been over in Lewisville, Lafayette, Boulder City Council, and not recently. So we're actually starting with you on this group with this new board. And we're really excited to share with you what we're doing in BVSD. But we also want to hear from you, what your concerns are, and also just hoping that, in general, this opens the relationship and connects our elected board members with you as elected officials as well, so that we can match names. So I'd like to start with introductions. I'm Tina Marquess, and I'm currently the President of the Boulder Valley School Board. I'm about to start my last year. It's been seven years that I'm closing in on now. How about Kathy?
Hi, I'm Kathy Gebhardt. I'm the Vice President of the Boulder Valley School Board, and I'm in the first year of my second term.
Stacy?
Hi, I'm Stacy Ziz. This is my first term, was elected less than a year ago, and I represent the area in North Boulder.
Lisa?
Hi, I'm Lisa Sweeney Moran, along with Stacy, I think, for what, nine or 10 months now, Stacy? And I've got some of South and East Boulder.
Okay, and our Superior Board Member, Kitty.
Hi, yes, I am the Superior Board Member. No, but I am proud to be from Superior. And, oh, Kitty Sergeant, and I am the Treasurer of the Board. And I am proud to represent a part of Superior and all of Broomfield.
Okay, and Donna Myers and Richard Garcia weren't able to attend. All right, so you want to do introductions on your end?
Sure, that'd be great. Mayor Clint Folsom, I'm in my second term as mayor. And why don't we go with Mark, Laura, and Neil. Mark, you're unmuted, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Hello?
There you go.
All right, sorry. I'm Mark Laisis, I'm the Mayor for a time, and I am in my first term. I'm up for reelection this November.
Hi, everyone, my name is Laura Skocinski. I am also in my first term. I've been on the Board for two years now.
I'm Neil Shaw. I've also been in the same cohort as Laura, been on the Board for about two years. Been at Superior about 11 years. We have a kid, a 10th grader at Monarch High, and an 8th grader at Eldo. And we also matriculated up through SES. And my name is...
Kenlish, yeah. And my name's Kenlish. I am in the same cohort as Neil and Laura, so I'm in my first term. And I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old, so not yet in BVSD, but looking forward.
I neglected to mention the child profile, but I've got two high schoolers at Monarch.
Okay.
I've got two 3rd graders at Eldo.
All right.
All right, and we've got Town Manager Matt Magley on the meeting as well. And Trustee Kevin Ryan will be joining us a little bit late.
Okay, so we came up with an agenda as a starting point, but because we only have an hour, I want to invite you to jump in if there's something of urgency. So please don't hesitate, because we're just taking a crack at this. So now I'd like to introduce our Superintendent Rob Anderson, who would like to, if it's okay with you all, give an update on how we're reopening the schools in BVSD, since it seems to be a top-of-mind subject. Is everyone okay with that? Awesome, all right.
Thanks, Tina, and good evening, everyone. It's so great to see so many of you again. And for some of you, I don't think I've had a chance to meet you, so it's good to meet you, even if virtually. Tina, I guess I'm going to present from my screen, or was Patricia, are you going to... Why don't I just share my screen? I think that's probably going to be the easiest.
Yeah, and Patricia can do it as well. Whatever you want.
Well, let me try. I'm going to try from my screen. So I have a few things to update you all on. The first and foremost is reintroduction. Today was the first day that we actually had kids back on campus. We had K through 2. We invited those students back today. I was at several schools throughout our district, and just the joy from both teachers, kids, it was so good to have kids back. A little bit different, obviously, we have social distancing, masking, kids washing hands, and just being really extra careful. But overall, an incredibly successful day. I think that you all know that we've certainly had some ups and downs in trying to get back. We originally had planned to come back in August in hybrid, ran into some issues. And so we are looking at a staggered return to schools. Today, it was K2, some of our intensive special education programs. We've started outdoor learning. Our tech center, which I had a chance to swing by, was open today. And then Gold Hill and Jamestown are back, were back as well, and that's K through 5. Those are really small schools in the mountains. On October 6, we're going to be able to bring back preschool two days a week. And then, as we think about bringing all of the other students back, I think that it's dependent on a couple of things. I know that you all are paying close attention, like we are, to the cases that are in Boulder County. We're seeing the right trends, but we need to continue to see those trends over the course of the next couple of weeks, to know and understand if we can fully come back. And we intend on bringing back all kids, hopefully here, over the course of the next month. We have some projected start dates. These were presented to the Board. We put together a working group to kind of help us figure this out, represented by parents, leaders, teachers. And so as you can see, we have the next big group of kids will be coming October 6. By October 22, we're looking at grade 3, 6, and 9. And then, depending upon how we are seeing success with the kids that have already come back, we hope to be able to potentially accelerate some of these other groups and bring them back in a way that's safe, but also gets them back to in-person learning, because we know, as a district, that in-person learning is incredibly important. We're going to be providing the public an update again next week on where we are with some of those efforts. The working group that we pulled together did an incredible job, and we're just trying to work through some of the logistical challenges. I would say one of the big challenges we're working through right now is trying to maintain childcare, which is something that we stood up at many of our sites as a service to our community, just low-cost childcare, and being able to stand that up and actually starting to bring kids back to our schools, because some of the folks that are standing in for childcare actually need to come back and work in some of those positions. And so I think that that's the logistical piece that we're really digging into right now, on how those two relate, because we want to continue to maintain childcare. That's certainly important to us, and we want to bring kids back. So that's kind of the high level of where we are today. I'd pause and be happy to answer any questions from the trustees, Superior trustees.
Dr. Anderson, thank you. And I didn't get to say this at the beginning, I really do appreciate you reaching out, because I think this is a great idea, both today and going forward, COVID notwithstanding. You know, so one of the questions that I have as a parent, and then I think the community has, as you look at, you know, sort of the data for Boulder County Health, and you compare it, you know, Boulder Valley School District versus St. Brain, and then you go beyond that to some of the other districts around the state, help us understand why BVSD's schedule here is somewhat significantly different than St. Brain specifically? And then, as you go and you look to Rappahoe or Douglas County, both of which, you know, had started much more aggressively in August, what's the inhibitor, you know, for the Boulder schools specifically?
Great question. And I think that, you know, every community is dealing with its complexities. I would say that there is an algorithm in every school district that if it works out, I think things can go a lot faster. And if it doesn't work out initially, there's some navigating that school districts and school leaders have to do. And that's the number of parents who choose to send their kids fully online, and then the number of employees in a school district that qualify for medical exemptions through the Governor's executive orders. And for us, we have about 4% of our parents enroll in Boulder Universal, and we had about 20% of our employees that were eligible for these medical exemptions, which means they're able to work remotely. So as you start to try to navigate those two pieces, I think that that has been something that we've had to try to overcome. I would say on one point, for us, I think we're able to move forward with more confidence coming in person, because we know that our high-risk employees have been able to designate themselves as such. Every person that applied for an exemption had had medical documentation from a licensed physician, and so that was a pretty rigorous process. And it's just something that, as we started moving forward, it was something that we realized as we started to announce our Phase 3. In contrast, many of our other districts, surrounding districts, had a lot more parents opt for online and may not have had as many exemptions, right? You have to have the people that can come to supervise the kids in the buildings to bring kids back. And I would say that that's one of the things that the working group is helping us really try to figure out. This staggered start has helped. I think that today was a really positive first step. And again, we are going to accelerate to the extent we can, but we're going to slow down as needed, depending upon local health data, which, right now, I'm sure you know and understand, that Boulder County Public Health is doing everything they can to really get their arms around that. I think some of the orders City of Boulder, Boulder County Public Health has been working on, is really helping to drive that down, so...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I think Boulder County Health has done us all a service in terms of extricating, you know, what is CU versus the rest of the county. I think that's helped. Just, you know, one quick follow-up. You mentioned 20% of teachers, I don't, or 20% of the staff had opted. What is that number? Because I don't know what the denominator is on something like that.
We can follow up with the specific numbers. I mean, we were, and the way that the exemptions work, it hovers around 300, you know, give or take. But then people fall in and out of this category as life, you know, moves on. And so it's somewhere around 300-ish. I think that we got seven new exemptions maybe last week. So every time that there's a person with a medical exemption, right, we have an obligation to honor that, and then we're trying to move the puzzle pieces around them. So to the extent that we're able to do that, you know, is very dependent upon the social distancing requirements, some of the regulations and requirements that... I got an email four minutes before this meeting started, some of those may be changing again, which has been an ongoing challenge. I think it's one that we're up for, that we'll continue to navigate. But the isolating, quarantining, and all those requirements, you know, those are challenges that we also have to try to overcome. So just, you know, to clearly answer your question, there's some logistical challenges, I think, that we face. It's not all just health data that's...
Okay. No, I totally appreciate the honesty and the transparency. And I guess my only other question is, because I think at the meeting last week, I think one of the things I seem to understand is the ability to keep the kids socially distanced within the schools. I mean, is that an issue of the size of the school and the HVAC capabilities, or is that just, you know, a large school, or rather, a large student body and not enough space?
Well, I think that, you know, we've worked very closely with our operations team to ensure that we're getting lots of circulation, 100%, close to 100% fresh air on the hour. So we think that we're good there. It's just all of our schools are unique and different, right? And they've been designed at different times, and so some have bigger classrooms than others. And the way that, you know, when you have lots of schools, and we have 30-some elementary schools for a 30,000 student school district, is actually a lot. And I think that our community values the smaller schools. They just make some of these things more tougher and difficult to break out in regards to class sizes, right? So, you know, the guidance from Boulder County Public Health isn't specific on the amount of social distancing we need to do. We know that in the first couple of weeks, we wanted to err on the side of caution for trying to maximize that. And then watch how that's going. I think that one of the most interesting pieces of information that we're monitoring, and as I speak to superintendents across the state, is the amount of transmission that's actually happening in schools. And in speaking with some large districts that have gone back, they may, in one district in particular, through the CD-PHE guidelines, they actually have quarantined 1,000 adults and kids. And so when you quarantine, then you have to check and follow up to see how many of those kids that you were quarantining, because they may have been exposed. Of those 1,000 folks that were quarantined, only two cases came back where somebody had transmitted COVID-19 in the school building. And so it's very low rate. We think that, and I think the word amongst superintendents I'm speaking to, is that they're seeing high success with the protocols that we're all following, and CD-PHE is laid out. So I think the more that that information is solidified and validated, the more comfortable folks are going to be coming back. And so we know that we're continuing to watch that and hope that will help us accelerate as well.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And it was in the Denver Post today as well. I mean, just in terms of the relative difference between Westminster and Cherry Creek, and both districts are struggling with the CD-PHE data and how to quarantine. And, you know, I think Cherry Creek's actual transmission rate's like .003%. So it's a challenge. So I do appreciate everything you're doing, and I will stop pestering you with questions for a few minutes at least.
No, Neil, you ask all the questions you want. That's why we're together. That's why, you know, this is exactly what this is for. So thanks, great question.
So I have a quick question, Dr. Anderson, on the projected start dates on this slide right here. So it looks like grade 3, and full disclosure, I have two 3rd graders, so I'm interested in this. So it's October 20. It's somewhat probable, and the feasibility determination is to be determined by 9/29, which is today.
Yep, so great question, Mark, very observant. We actually sent out notifications to parents. We're going to wait another week to kind of formally announce that. We're just watching the health data to make sure the health data continues to come down like it is. If it were to continue to go up, I think we'd have to have that conversation with Boulder County Public Health. And we're feeling really good about the feasibility. I'll make that formal determination sometime next week. And again, as we think about 4th, 5th grade, 7th, 8th grade, 10th, 12th grade, to the extent that we can bring those kids back safely and it makes sense, we'll try to do that. Again, just, you know, we think it's just wise to wait another week, let's see where the health data shakes out, and then we'll be making that official announcement next week. I will say that one of the hardest things around navigating this pandemic is the ever-changing information. And so we're trying to be just clear, transparent, honest, and try to, when we say something, do it, because we know that when we say we're going to do something, then we're not able to do that, that that's a huge inconvenience, and we just want to be fair to our stakeholders.
Thank you.
Dr. Anderson, first I'll say, I really appreciate both you and the Board of Education having this meeting with us. It's great to be able to interact and have questions, especially in a time like this. A follow-up, kind of a two-part question on one of the questions Neil had. So my understanding is that as you look to further reintroduce the various grades of students back into a physical classroom, probably the primary constraint is the teacher exemptions and just being able to have the amount of staff to come in. Is that the primary constraint, or are there other constraints? Obviously, the virus, but is that your number-one constraint that's within your control?
Well, and to the extent it's in our control. Yeah, so I would say staffing is the challenge, right? We want to make sure that we have enough staff to meet the health protocols and be able to manage in-person instruction. I will say that a logistical challenge that we're running into is, you know, there is the ability to bring in other staff, you know, substitute teachers, to help kind of fill in some of those gaps, and finding substitute teachers when every single school district in the entire Denver metro is looking for them at the same time. I think that we've been more successful than most, and we'll continue to look for that. But again, I would say, Ken, it's not a simple equation. We today, for example, pulled folks out of our central office to supervise classes, help out pitch-in in schools, and we'll continue to do that. Our number-one focus and objective is to open schools in person for kids safely, so they can get back face-to-face with their teachers. And so staffing is for sure a big challenge that we're wrestling with.
And I appreciate that, and that actually is a very good segue into my next question. So obviously, either substitutes, or I guess being able to go out and hire additional teachers, is that something you're considering? And then, as a follow-up to that, in my reading of some of the articles in the Daily Camera and Denver Post and whatnot, I've read that there has been a drop in enrollment that's probably greater than what was anticipated, and that has associated budget effects. Does that limit your ability to actually respond and bring on more subs or more permanent teachers that are necessary to implement the plans you'd like to implement?
Well, I think that we were very comfortable bringing on temporary support, not double-staffing our classrooms. I don't know that we'd have, you know, if I went to hire 300 teachers, that's, you know, $30 million. Each teacher's salaries and benefits averages over $100,000. So that's not realistic. But I do think bringing in substitute teachers, repurposing central office staff, and we've been doing a lot of repurposing, and our bus drivers and some of our clerical staff, some of our paraprofessionals have been true heroes. They've just jumped in and helped out in any way that they can. We are just so thankful to have such great employees. But I would say that the way that we're approaching this, Ken, is that we're willing to do what we need to do to get school up and running now. We know how important that is. There is a potential funding cliff that, you know, that our state budget is going to be facing. I mean, I think that we're ready to cross that bridge when we get there. Certainly, we're not spending on things that we don't need, and there are some savings by not opening up directly in-person instruction that we've been able to recoup. But, you know, we're committed to spending what it takes, and we have a very healthy budget. We have a nice fund balance. Over the past three years, we've come in under budget, which is helpful. We've built our reserve by a percent over the course of the past two years, so we've been fiscally responsible. And you do that for times like this. And so we're going to be working closely with the Board, closely with staff, to make sure that we're doing the things that we need to. Money's not going to be the reason that we're not opening up schools. You know, just finding people is what I think are biggest challenges.
That's great, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Just a quick follow-up. I read way too much. So second page, third page of the Wall Street Journal today was a story about schools reopening, and there is a blurb about Denver Public kind of reversing the hybrid model, so that the teacher is at home teaching remotely to the kids with a para, like, sort of in the room, to kind of make sure the kids don't go crazy. I mean, is that something that BVSD has looked at at all?
Yeah, no, we have.
As a way to solve the teacher conundrum, so to speak?
Absolutely, no, Neil. We've actually looked at that, and we think that there's an opportunity to do that. I would tell you, at the beginning of the year, you know, we had ordered cameras. It's a system we call REVUS, which is Remote Education. I forget the acronym, but it's basically a monitor, a high-def camera that has a wide enough span so teachers can kind of teach, and then the technological setup that they need. That got tangled up in the supply chain, but we're fully running now. So that is something that we'll be looking at as an opportunity. So, you know, we're not going to be pulling substitutes in to teach. They'll be there, substitutes, pairs, whomever will be there to supervise, and the direct instruction will be coming from our certified qualified.
Great, thank you.
Is that it on the reopening? Should we move on to our next topic? Yes? Okay.
I'm good.
And I'll just throw it out there, have any of you visited Eldorado or Superior? And do you ever want to see these cameras in action? You can email Rob if you want to go check it out. It's kind of neat. We were at Ryan Elementary this morning.
Like a live stream from inside?
Yeah.
Well, we could, if any of you wanted to, we could set up a tour, we could go through, and we could just show you, so you could see what's happening in person. That'd be a lot of fun. I always love going to schools. You have great schools in Superior. Yeah, just, if, reach out, let me know, we'd be happy to set that up.
Yeah, I'd be really interested. I'll do that, thank you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, a few of us went this morning. It was just great to be there and to see how the positive and how this is going to work, and to stop thinking about all the things that aren't going to work. So today was a really good focus on things moving forward. So it was a good day. All right, so the next item is just a strategic plan update, so that you understand what we as a district are doing to help with all of our kids, so...
Very good, thanks, Tina. And so when I got here now, so I'm in my third year as superintendent here in BVSD. First year I was here, we really began a process of engaging our community around what are the things that we think are going well, what are the things that we feel are areas we wanted to improve. Resulted in a very thorough five-year strategic plan that we're calling Altogether for All Students. Really, three big outcome, big, long-term outcomes we're seeking through this plan, which is, we want to make sure that we're igniting learning in our kids, making sure kids all benefit from challenging and relevant opportunities. We want to make sure that we're reducing disparities in achievement. I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then we want to make sure that when kids leave us, they have the skills necessary to be successful. And that is just, we're going to need to prepare them just beyond a high school diploma, that they're going to need, we know that to be successful in the world of work, they'll need skills. And we also know that not every child is going to go to college, and that there's very viable pathways that we need to be supporting and promoting through our curriculum to make sure that we're really reaching all of our kids and making sure that they have the opportunities to grow up and be who they become and choose a great career. So when I talk about equip, reducing disparities in achievement, I think that you all probably know this, but if you don't, Boulder Valley School District has some of the largest achievement gaps in the state. And as a state, Colorado has some of the largest achievement gaps in the country. And these have been persistent gaps, achievement gap being the difference in achievement between our white students, our Latino students, African-American students, our poor students, and our students that are not living in poverty, and then also our students with disabilities versus our students without disabilities. And so there's just, there's significant gaps in both growth and achievement, and it's something that as a board and as a community, we're focused on fixing. And that the reality is that we feel, while we've always had the tagline excellence and equity, we feel like you can't have excellence without equity, and are really working towards this idea that we need to not only continue to do, you know, serve those students we've been serving well all along, but reach in and figure out what it is we can do to make sure that all kids, regardless of where they live, their zip code, their race, whether or not English is their first language or not, that they're getting the very best opportunities from what is an incredible school district. So a heavy focus on equity within our strategic plan. This is a pretty dense document. We dialed in pretty quickly on about 13 key initiatives. The ones that are in Boulder are ones that we've already started. And these are the areas we feel like that if we deliver on these areas, that we'll begin to see those outcomes change and achieve equity within our school system. If you wanted to see some of the specific work we're doing around equity, if you were to go to our website and just type in BVSD Equity, you'll come up through the Excellence Through Equity website. And I think if this works, I'm going to try to take you there right now. And we just have a ton of equity work happening in our district that I think that we're all very proud of. We define what equity means for us, equity versus equality, how are we becoming more culturally responsive as a community and a school system? And then, some of our key initiatives that we've been taking on over the past two years to really begin to engage our entire community and working towards equitable outcomes, and whether it's bridging the digital divide. We've established a Latino Parent Advisory Council, so we can begin to co-create solutions on what needs to be better in our system to help our Latino parents, our Latino families. How are we promoting cultural responsiveness amongst all staff? We've revamped our curriculum. We've totally rewritten our discipline policies. We've had disproportionate discipline for quite some time, meaning if you're Latino, if you're African-American, you have two to three times the likelihood of being suspended, and these are for similar offenses. And so this is something that we're really digging into to try to really work on. Equal-opportunity schools is an opportunity for access. How are we promoting food safety? How are we working with families together? I would encourage you all, there's lots of stuff here. Just know that we have one of the most active equity agendas of all the school districts in Colorado. We're really proud of the work that we're doing there, and we'll continue to focus on equity and focus on those outcomes that we're trying to improve now.
Quick question, Dr. Anderson, and I apologize, because you folks probably announced this this summer, I'm not even aware of it. I mean, what's the current status on police officers in the schools, especially at the high schools?
Great question. We agreed this summer in working with the Board, working with our community, to take a four-month look at our SRO program in our schools. Right now, we have two groups that are working on reviewing that, along with our Board, who has been paying attention and also has had several presentations from staff. We've developed an Equity Council, which was really incredible. We feel like establishing an Equity Council aligned with our equity work and also would be a great tool for us to look... We feel like establishing an Equity Council aligned with our equity work and also would be a great tool for us to look at this issue through a different lens. For about 40 spots, we had 900 people apply throughout our community, which we felt like is wonderful. So they're meeting every Wednesday with, and we'll be reporting out to our board with some recommendations at the end of October. Also, our District Accountability Committee is also taking a look at this and they've developed a subcommittee similarly in October. And then once we have those recommendations, you know, the board, we'll discuss with the board what our next steps are and where we need to move with that issue. But certainly something that I think there's a lot of interest in, given the number of people who applied. And we're very excited about how that work is going.
Great, thank you.
Okay, back to the presentation, okay. So again, as we think about the long-term outcomes, again, just to kind of wrap up our strategic plan, these are the things that we're looking to solve for with our strategy. I will say that we're in the process of developing strategic plan metrics. And the board, I think, is tentatively seen, and I'm not sure that we formally approved yet, a series of metrics that could serve as a dashboard to our community on what are the things? How are we doing in regards to closing achievement gaps, reaching our goals? And then we've also set some opportunity metrics and we've done some community engagement around that as well. So we're trying to also be accountable as well. You know, sometimes it's hard for, you know, school districts do a lot of work, but sometimes it's hard for the folks in the public to understand and know how we're progressing. And so we're committed to that accountability, I mean, committed to the community engagement that we feel like you need to see what we need to be accountable to. And so those are, that is work that has unfortunately been somewhat interrupted by COVID-19, but work that we're excited about and will continue to work on. Any question, any other questions on strategic plan that I can answer for you all?
Rob, can I just make a quick comment?
Yes.
One of the initiatives in the strategic plan that I think is interesting, and I have a high schooler and a middle schooler at this time, is that the district is investing a lot in creating standards so that they're the same high expectations on academics at all of our 56 sites, but trying to implement that while still retaining some of the character and the uniqueness of each of the communities we serve across our 500 square miles. And I think that's been a pretty big initiative the district has undertaken. We haven't had a clear set of standards. So I'm really encouraged by this and I think it will serve all of our students to have an opportunity to have higher levels of learning. So, Rob, did I get any of that wrong?
No, I think that that's really important. You know, I think that for those of us in education, and I've worked in several states, Florida, Georgia, and now Colorado, you know, state departments of educations have never seen education as an education standard they don't like. So what happens is, over the course of a school year, teachers might be faced with teaching 140 standards. And I think that the right way to go about the work which we've undertaken, as Tina shared this summer with our teachers, is prioritizing what are the standards that are most critical that we need to make sure that every kid needs to know so they can be successful the following year. And if you leave that up to chance and you leave that up to the interpretation of individual schools, individual teachers, the unintended consequence is that you get these gaps in learning that then you're working to fill. That it's just, it's more of a logistical planning issue. And so we've worked with our teachers to prioritize standards. We're excited about that and feel like that is going to make a big difference as we think about getting kids prepared for both college and career.
Questions?
And you can always ask follow-up questions, email me. I'll be happy to respond or pick up the phone and have a conversation.
Okay, the other thing we just wanted to touch on is how we've reorganized the district and how it affects Superior. So, Rob?
Absolutely. So three years ago when we came and I started to, you know, I had, I developed a 100-day plan to really assess the organization and how can maybe there are opportunities to improve. We realized that the way that we were structured organizationally didn't account for the uniqueness of the needs of the different parts of our communities. So as opposed to a more of a hierarchy, one person in charge of secondary schools, one person in charge of elementary schools, we broke our organizational structure on the academic side into regions. So the East Network, then Southwest Network, and the Northwest Network. I believe we have Margaret Crespo, who's the area superintendent for the schools in Superior, on the phone. Margaret, or on the call, Margaret, are you there?
I am, Dr. Anderson. Hi, everyone.
Isn't that in a book? Are you there? Be there, goddess, be my... Sorry.
It's all good. I've never heard that before, so we're good.
So here are the schools. Margaret, if you want to just introduce yourself and then I'll take over.
Yep, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Anderson mentioned, my name is Margaret Crespo and I am the area superintendent for the Southwest Network. On that, on the PowerPoint, you can see the schools that are included in that. Really excited, allows us to very much focus on our regions and the needs and be very service-oriented for our buildings, our community parents, and our staff. So I'll just hand it over and I'm here to answer any questions.
So the way that we're organized, trustees, and this, I want to make sure that you, that, you know, that that I explained to you how we work. If you were to say, say you have a stakeholder reach out to you with concerns, I'd encourage you to hand those off to me and I would engage Margaret and her team and make sure that we got back and circle back so you know what we did to respond. As elected officials, we know that you get contacted. And if there's things that involve schools, we want to be partners with you. We want to make sure that we take care of that and then loop you in so you know how that's handled. And so Margaret would be the person who would be, who would be working with that, her and her team. And she has a team of about 10 individuals that represent all the different areas of need within the school system. There's an executive director, areas around all the curriculum content areas, special education. And so she's got a great team of folks that is here to help and support the citizens of Superior. And as trustees, again, let us be your partners. Send that to me. We'll make sure that we handle the situation, engage the constituents, and then circle back to let you know what happened.
Okay, next item. Is everyone okay to move on?
The next item that we had on the agenda, Tina, was the legislative platform, which I'm happy to pull up if you would like for me to. But we don't, we only have the 2020 legislative platform, so.
Yeah, I think that I was just going to touch, you know, we have lobbyists and we go to the Capitol every year and ask for certain things. But generally, our focus is on funding and on funding that comes without any that comes for, so we can spend it the way we want. So in general, we're trying to oppose grant funding, which tends to favor districts ironically like us who have good grant writers, but also tends to just work on pet projects of legislatures, legislators, which we may have fulfilled in a different way through a partner organization like Mental Health Partners or through, you know, whatever partner it might be. So what we prefer is flexible funding so that we can invest in whatever we need to invest in at the time. So for instance, is a really good example, right now, we just need money for para educators. Well, we don't need money. We actually need the para educators, but over time, we'll need those positions. And the other thing that we're really going to be looking for, to the extent that it's possible, is to try to understand our funding situation as early as we can this year. It's really difficult to build budgets when your enrollment is all over the place because of the pandemic. And we need to send out contracts to teachers in March is when we prefer to do that. So to the extent that we are able to lobby for certainty around funding at an earlier time, it'll just create more certainty for our families, for the people who are employed by BDSD. We continue to be one of the largest employers in the area. And it just has a lot of repercussions. So that's a, that's sort of our legislative thrust for this year. Does anyone want to add anything on that, to that? Any questions? Okay, and then just the other piece, I don't know if, trustees, do you all receive reports on your K through 12 population and enrollment? No, okay, so we've shared this with other councils and I think you're the only people that are trustees. They're, call people councils, so my apologies. We have areas in our district that have decreasing enrollment and decreasing number of kids, and Superior is one of them. So we have some slides, but we can also just send them to you separately. But you're in a pretty sharp decline for the number of kids that are in the K through 12 age group. And it's reflected in our enrollment in the schools outside of the pandemic. So that's just something that councils are sometimes interested in knowing, oh, are they going to private school or are they doing this? But actually, the numbers are just dwindling, probably as some of the developments in Superior have come to age. And perhaps some of those kids are now going to college, but the parents are still remaining in Rock Creek or, you know, whichever development it might be. So, Rob, do you want to add anything to that? That's really glossed over.
No, I think that, I think that you've articulated that well, Tina, that, you know, we're consistently looking at enrollment to make sure that we have the right amount of staffing and support. And again, I do think that the district as a whole is on a decline, declining enrollment, of course. The, this pandemic has taken also a temporary, I think a temporary significant downturn to turn for most districts across the Denver metro. We're down about 1,200 students more than we thought we would, and I think that's on par with a lot of our, with our other neighboring districts. But we feel like that once the pandemic's over, those numbers will jump back up, but we'll still be on a slow decline. And we'll share those slides with you all so you can kind of see that specifically.
Just a quick question along the lines of enrollment. One of the issues, and you guys are probably better, more aware of this, that we have in Superior is the way that the town is sort of divided up such that Rock Creek feeds into the two schools that are actually within Superior and the rest of Superior feeds into Monarch K-8. You know, and historically, the density of population wasn't very high there, but from a demographic distribution, it was, you know, that's the part of town that's actually more demographically distributed than the rest of Rock Creek. I mean, what is the process for BBSD to look at, the potential redistricting? You know, as those areas start to grow, specifically the development in downtown Superior is growing and there's going to be, you know, quite a few more people there. But the way that the lines are drawn today, all those kids will feed into the Monarch K-8 in Lewisville on the other side of the highway.
So first, I just, Glenn Segrew is our demographer and he's saying, he's amazing. It's just incredible what he can predict. And we do redistrict sometimes when there's a significant new development. And we redistrict two things. One is school attendance area. So for instance, when we opened up Metalark three years ago, we redistricted schools in Lafayette to accommodate that. And then if you see a significant shift, we also can redistrict. The other thing that we'll be redistricting this year is actually our board seats because population changes across our district have changed enough for the second time in the last four years that we'll need to redistrict those representative areas. I think in general, we'll redistrict when we think a school is going to be full. So in terms of the town of Superior development, and one thing that's always interesting, and it's unfortunate Glenn isn't here because he has probably already predicted the yield of students that will come out of town of Superior, which is highly dependent on how many single-family home and townhomes there are. We get very little yield out of anything called a multifamily dwelling or an apartment. So it's kind of contingent upon those two categories. But if you want more information about that, because he probably will have already been working with the planning on that to see how the numbers are going to plan out and how the schools are going to be impacted. If you want that information, we can provide that to you.
Yeah, I'll reach out. Thank you.
Okay, is that fair, Rob?
Absolutely. No, we're happy to provide that information.
Okay.
This is Kevin, Kevin Ryan. My apologies for being a couple minutes late. My apologies for not having video. I'm having my own technology challenges. I have two questions, two sets of questions, one around technology and one about absenteeism. Last year in the spring was a challenge with a lot of kids to, that were just not showing up. I don't think we've talked about absenteeism. I'd like to understand what you're experiencing. And then I'll ask my other two questions around technology. From a hardware perspective, I have three kids and we received notification that there were potential laptops, inexpensive Chromebooks that were available, but please don't ask if they're, because there was a shortage. My first question about the hardware, is there still a shortage? And if so, when will that be overcome? On the software side of the house, I think there have been a lot of challenges. There are just an incredible amount of embedded links. Different teachers in different districts are using different platforms. What are you doing to advance trying to get a lot of those platforms synchronized? So as kids go from class to class, they're not exited one platform, leaving another, reducing the number of embedded links, et cetera. I'll go back on you.
Happy to answer those questions. In regards to attendance, I think that the way that we're structured, and in this spring, listen, in the course of two weeks, we went from operating as normal to shutting down and reopening as a 100% online school district. And I can't commend our team enough for being able to turn that around. I think that the longer that that went on, I think that there were challenges. And we tried to listen to our community and understand what those challenges were. So when we stood up home learning this past August, that we were able to answer some of those. And Kevin, one of the things that we really talked about was trying to simplify the platforms. And that, I know that we did that with Schoology and CSO, which are our two main platforms that we have, we feel like are working better than that worked in the spring. We've tried to provide teachers more resources. We tried more, to provide more structure for teachers to follow so there's more predictability for kids and for parents. Because we know that those were frustrations and we had that data very clearly from the information that they received. And so that we've worked on trying to simplify those platforms for the end user, which is the kids and oftentimes the parents who are helping their kids. From a hardware perspective, I would say that the supply chain in regards to technology, especially Chromebooks, was really, really tight when we were with July and August. We have lots of Chromebooks in our district. We have many of our schools, six through 12, that are actually one-to-web where every student actually has their own Chromebook. And then in our elementary schools, they have many Chromebook carts that they utilize. And so we took those machines that were on carts, we distributed those to our students. We were able to recently get in about 1,400 machines and so we're distributing those as quickly as we can. We do have, we do have an IT helpline for folks that are struggling with their technology. If you go to our website, you'll be able to find that really quickly. And then we also have a really neat program called IT Prime, where if you're having an issue with a computer in your home, you put in a heat ticket on our website. And then we actually have a van that pulls up almost like Amazon Prime that will come, change out your Chromebook, help you out, support you. And so we've really tried to provide those supports. I would say that I do believe that we still have some Chromebooks that are on order and, you know, the supply chain is, that is freeing up, that's allowing us to get those orders in. We've had some orders that are delayed. But again, if there's families that need technology, if you reach out, we're doing everything we can to make sure that they have they have the right hardware. We've worked really hard on connectivity as well. I would say in the spring, we got down to about a couple hundred families. A lot of the families in Nederland was kind of the areas we were struggling. We've worked a private partner, a private-public partnership with LiveWire where they're actually, we are using some of our dark fiber network and trading that out in exchange for Wi-Fi access for some of our families and schools. In the next three years, we hope to add that onboard at all of our schools. Right now, it's at eight schools. And so we're looking at different ways for connectivity. We're working with Comcast to provide Internet Essentials, which is a program we're paying for for families who need it. And it just worked really hard to make sure that we're creating that connectivity that we need so kids can access home learning. I would say the biggest challenge isn't connectivity. In some instances, it's speed. Right? If you have several kids and a family member that are on the internet at the same time trying to do things like stream video, I think that tangles up bandwidth pretty quick. Again, we're working on those on a case-by-case basis. And in regards to attendance, if I haven't already answered this, you know, we're seeing really high attendance. You know, we have protocols on how we take attendance for those that are learning virtually. It's participation and for those that are coming in person, it will actually be attendance as we have two systems, separate systems working. And I know that in the spring, we were above 90% attendance. And I would say that as we're bringing kids back, we're seeing, we're seeing really good attendance numbers. I don't have exact figures since we've come back, but we do have a team of engagement specialists that reaches out if there's kids that we can't get ahold of.
So for the online learning, are you over 90% attendance today? And I am interested, I really do appreciate the answer. And I'd be very interested in, what is our baseline level of attendance in normal times? And then what is, what was the level of attendance in the spring, which I know there were a lot of struggles with homes and connectivity, et cetera. And then I'd like to see what the attendance numbers look like this year. And understand if you don't have much of your fingertips, if we could follow up on that. I'd like to see what this looks like. Thank you.
Happy to follow up. Mid-90s is... Mid-nineties is, is, I think district average is above ninety-five percent in, in non-pandemic. I would, I don't think that we're that high during the pandemic, but we can certainly work on getting those numbers for all the trustees, so you can have that.
Kitty had a question for the trustees that I wanted to make sure we had time for.
Yes, I'm just wondering with, you know, all the development going on, are any of the new houses targeted to first-time house, homebuyers? Are they all, I mean, the signs I see, starting at five hundred and this, you know, that pretty much excludes young families. So I'm just curious about that.
Well, the answer is, is yes, we're, we're definitely seeing some new housing types coming in, both in, in process and coming in. And, and, you know, there's, you know, a price point can dictate entry-level housing, but there's, there's plenty of people with younger children buying more expensive housing too. So it's, it's not always price-dependent, but, but we are seeing some, some different housing types being planned. And so having that enrollment data will really be helpful because we, it, it seems like all we ever hear from people is that schools are bursting at the seams and, and enrollments out of, you know, I mean, the, the trailers have been moved off so that, that kind of visual element is gone. And I think people are starting to, I mean, we've, Superior's reached its peak. You know, we've, we peaked out and, and now we're, we're kind of going back down. And hopefully with some of this new housing, we will see that stabilize over time. That's, I think that's where we'd like it to be. But the reality is not a lot of people are leaving and we don't have, exactly. We don't have a, a lot of new stock of housing, but it's, some more is coming, so. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, and if you want, Glenn has a chart by area in BVSD that shows the yield of kids per housing type, which is just fun to have, I think, if you're involved in development, if you don't have that accessible to you already.
Absolutely. Now, we've, we've definitely gotten some feedback from him. I recall over the past six years that I've been on the board, we've definitely, I've seen his name and seen his reports. So, yeah, would, but would appreciate that because that's, it's an ever-changing figure.
And what other questions from either the trustees or the BVSD group?
I don't have a question, but I, I do have a comment. You know, my, my kids are going to Eldorado and we've got a new principal, which I can't imagine how challenging it is to be a new principal in, in normal times and to have to have a new person take over a school during remote learning. I think that Principal Barb has just done an excellent job in terms of reaching out to the community, making herself available. So I, I, I recognize that that was going to be a really difficult transition for Eldo, but we've been just really pleasantly surprised with, you know, the job that she's doing. So, good job finding her.
That's what we need to hear.
If I could add a quick question and a comment. One of the things that I think, one of the emails a couple weeks had said is that we, you know, they're great enough can go to outdoor learning if they choose or if the school chooses. I haven't seen any ball up to that. And, you know, obviously, we're getting to that time of year in Colorado where the weather's far less predictable. What can Superior do to help, you know, facilitate that? I mean, between the CARES Act funding that the town has received, that the county has received, you know, I think a lot of us are more than willing to do what we need to do to help BVSD out, you know, whether it's, you know, just outdoor, whatever. Because I do acknowledge that my son, who's in pre-calculus, will not do very well outdoors. But there might be something else that could work because I think we would all like to see the kids get back to seeing their friends from, you know, a closer distance if possible.
I, I saw Rob writing down Superior can help, and I think he's talking about those ideas.
How, how did you know? I, I appreciate the, I appreciate the offer. I think that what I can do is engage our principals to see if they have needs and then we can follow up. And would, would Matt would be, would Matt be the person for us to follow up with that can then communicate with you all? I'm seeing, I'm seeing some head nods. Okay, very good. Thanks so much for the offer, we appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, we just really appreciate the opportunity to meet with you virtually. Wish, wish we could be in person, but given the circumstances, I think this is a, a great opportunity. So we do appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. And please do let us know how we can help. We want to be, we want to be your partners in, in the community and in the schools. So please let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it. And of course, we want to be your partners too. And then, you know, if you have feedback and I, I'm hoping that we can meet again in a year, if that seems okay with everybody and check in. If we need to meet earlier though, we really are available. So, you know, anyway, it, it works for us, this was easy to put together. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks so much.
Thanks very much. Thanks, everyone, appreciate you.
Good to see my name.
Thank you, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.